We're on, how nice. Welcome everyone, welcome to tonight's board meeting. I'll ask Antonia to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to its republic which stands one issue in the ground indivisibly possible for the relationship between the two.
Thank you. Good evening everyone, welcome to the June 17th meeting. I'll start right away with the minutes of May 20th. Is the board ready to move?
Yes ma'am.
Any changes?
No.
Does that motion still approve?
Still moved.
Second. Next on the agenda, the fire department held their fire over on Lakewood, so we'll wait for them. Then we'll have the chamber. Ollie?
Good evening mayor and board.
Could you bring that mic to him?
Yeah.
Ollie, could you bring the mic down, please?
Yeah, there it is. Good evening. This was a big day for the chamber because thanks to our public relations guy Bill Corbett and his team, we had a small business focus on Limbrook this morning and it was really fun. They came and they did, they went to Sweet Pea's and they went to Merly's and they went to Joe at Vincent's and then they went to Stars on Broadway. And they let me get a plug in a little bit for some of the things that we've been doing. And it was a really nice experience. It was really nice for the people, the stores that did it were really grateful and they were really, you know, calling me today and thanking me, so everybody was very happy. So I still hope you all saw us. Cruise nights started last week because we rained out the first week, but it wasn't as good a turnout for cars. There were a lot of people there, but it wasn't as good a turnout for cars because we were missing two major groups, so we're hoping it builds up and they're going to be back this week. So hopefully this week will be good weather and the cars, you know, everything has to go line up. Everything has to line up, so hopefully it'll be nice. But we did give out our window makeover awards at the cruise night last week. Stars on Broadway, the dance studio, won first place. Sweet Pea's won second place and Paramount Beauty Supply won third place. So it was fun, we had a lot of fun with it and I think we still have some work to do to get some of the stores to clean up, so maybe we could put our heads together, maybe Brian could help us. Mentioning to some of the stores, and you and I were talking about it this morning, Mayor Beach, so I think we should talk to some of these stores because we need to clean them up, you know? I don't, I mean, I'll go in there with water and soap myself, I have to, but there's a few stores that are kind of eyesores and I think it'd be nice to be able to...
Be careful what we say and do.
Oh yeah, I know, I know. I mean, I go in, I'm nice to them, I just go in and say, "Can you wash your windows?" You know, so, but I don't know, it'll work. I think, I think it's contagious though. We did get a lot of people that didn't necessarily enter the contest, but they did their windows.
Nice.
So I thought that was a good thing, so, it was a good try. Prom nights coming up, the 25th, most everything's pretty organized for that. We're going to just do, use the street music this year, we're not going to have a loud, live band, we're just going to use the night. And we did that last year too. We didn't have a live band.
Street music last year?
What, what's that?
We used the street music last year?
Yeah.
And it was loud enough?
That's what I was talking to them about. I think it's going to be fine because honestly, last year, I wasn't even sure if we did use street music or not and then checking out, we realized that we did not have a band. I didn't even miss it, nobody missed it. Because typically, I mean, when I'm interviewing for Limbrook TV, I can't even hear the kids because the music is so loud. So I think last year was better and I think, I think we're fine with it and I don't think anybody missed it. But we have a lot of balloons and stuff ordered and, so it should be beautiful, it should be fun. July 14th is our Chamber Fest and that's a big craft fair and we're going to have businesses are going to be allowed to have tables there also, if they want. And we're working with a guy who seems really on top of everything. He does this, this is his life, he does, does, organizes these kinds of festivals. So any, any, if anybody's listening out there and they want to be in it, in any way, if it's a business or if it's, if they have crafts that they want to have a table, they just will contact and we can get them in touch with this van.
We're just doing tables, we're not doing any booths, correct?
Well, it's, it's a craft fair, so they'll have their tents with their crafts. And then if, if a business, say for instance, Flow Fitness was asking me if they could, the library wants to have one, there was another business that wanted to have a table also. And, and I love that idea, that they could come out and do that. I went to one in another town and they had business craft, business craft, and it was just very nice, so it wasn't all like intense craft, it wasn't all intense just businesses. It was, it was a really nice event, so I'm looking forward to it, I think it's going to come out really nicely. And of course, August 12th, we're still looking for the more sponsors for the golf. I think Jeff is coming.
Jeff is here.
Yeah, so we'll let him talk about that.
He said he would be here.
Yeah, he said he would, right? Yeah. Okay. And that's it, all I can say is shop local.
Yeah.
Any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? A little bit? You, did you want to say something? It looked like you were going to have a side.
With the, with the cruise night, how did, were a lot of people going and using the businesses on the block?
Yes, yes, and the new Johnny McGory seemed to be nice and crowded.
Not a good.
Yeah, and, and Vincent's was crowded, Angelina's looked full, yeah. And really, there isn't much more than, that's what we've got. I mean, there, there's some on the outskirts, but yeah, they, they seemed that people were full. I can't wait till the Elsie Lane gets up because I think that's, you know, essentially core part of the avenue, it'd be nice to have.
There are also other stores, but they don't choose to be open?
No, I can't, I can't get them.
Little foot traffic, I thought it'd make it good for people to see what they had inside there.
I think it would be great too.
They choose not to.
I understand, that, I, you know, I understand, I, I think it would be great too and there's, you know, a couple other places that I definitely think could benefit by being open, but I do understand the other side of it and paying employees overtime, you know, and that kind of thing, so, you know, I guess there's two sides to it, but...
You also have a request here to have craft fair signs put up.
Yes.
For July 14th. Do you have locations, because one by Autozone and two on Atlantic Avenue, are there any locations?
Right, and then the other ones are just those little poster signs, like the yard signs?
Okay, where do you tend to put that?
They're in various locations. I don't know exactly.
Can't be on the curb line.
What's that?
They're not allowed to be on the curb line.
Okay.
If that could be on people's property, they're on the curb line.
Right. If, if they're on people's property, people have to be asked, right? Like, I could put one in my area, you'll put one in mine.
Yeah, that you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem on private property, just on the curb line, because, I mean, that goes into political science, start getting there and the whole village, now it gets out of hand because they start planting them all over the place and we really don't want that. So keep on the private property, that's fine.
Okay. He's, he's putting, he's handling that part of it, so yeah, we're trying to coordinate that.
You just can't go all over the place, just put the signs wherever they're killing.
Okay. Yeah, he's got a lot of store posters for, for it to pass out, you know, to leave in, in the stores too, that, they're over at Vincent's right now.
Yeah, they're all working.
So what do you think if we, if, I think we have enough money as sponsors to do a banner for the craft fair because I'd love to do it and I don't know, I think this is a Phil question, but I don't know if it can be done right at the opening of Atlantic and Sunrise? Is there a wait and could it be done?
You mean by the trestle?
Yeah.
Never put it there. You need to have two opposite poles, correct?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what's, what's needed. Um, yeah, before we go making it, we need to know, number one, you guys will hang it, number two, where, if it's a good place, if it's worth it.
All right, I'll talk to Phil about it, we'll let you know.
Okay, yeah, let us know, all right.
We're going to discuss that in work session too.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to grab a lot of people for it.
Yeah, of course, you want to be successful, I get it.
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Yeah. I think we'll bring people from other towns as well.
The 14th is on a Sunday too.
It's on Sunday.
So that's going to be good for some people.
Yeah.
Sunday, if you want, Sunday afternoon.
Yeah, just hang out.
Go to a couple restaurants, craft fair.
Yeah, have some brunch, yeah.
Let's spend the whole day there.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Somebody who's coming from the Knights' Board is?
Major, it is.
The next one. Number five and it's, nobody's here from Fire Department, they put this. Number five. Air confirmation to go to Valley Stream to attend the parade. The chief calls, engine and a towel ladder and a bus. Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to go down to Fort Valdeer. They have changing up the dog. They're involved with the, you know, the hospital down there. On Wednesday, July 3rd. Want to use the van for one day, we're down there and back, I guess it's like the same time, same day that night. I don't have a problem with that.
Nope. Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next on, in the Fire Department is only request permission to utilize utility truck and a ladder company to attend and participate in Stewart Manor, Fourth of July bug parade. What is it, a bug parade?
Is this the water balloon parade that they have every year?
It says buck.
I know. One of the Lakemans, I think I did with the water balloon, that one.
Brian, do you know what bug parades?
Leibman took one on the head this year.
I know, by a softball player.
Do you know what bug parades?
Not at all.
I do not know, but I'll authorize that. I'll make a motion. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next one is a convention in Albany, possibly.
Sounds like a fun one.
For a whole week.
The capacity?
I'll let the table this one, when the chief gets here. They know the chief's calls out here.
Okay.
Next, the table, work session when they can be able to discuss it with them. Next is a request from the Fire Department to attend the parade in Lakeview for the Fourth Battalion Parade. Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Thank you. Fire Department is Earl Avenue, 170 Earl Avenue, they're repaving their parking lot and they're looking for to park 30 vehicles for a week, July 15th to July 17th. Earl Avenue parking lot has room, put 30 cars in.
It's a long way to come, but say yes. I've been, I've been watching it and even during the day, there's, there's no fruit there.
There's not fruit?
Yeah, yeah, especially that portion.
Yeah.
It gets crowded more along the Long River and up towards Forest Avenue, even that's where the construction crews have been.
All right, so you know what, I'm going to suggest that somebody put a placard, some sort of placard in their window so we know that they're from 170.
Yes, that would be great.
All right. So I'll have Sue contact them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I have that email as well, so we'll put that in the book.
Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye. Thank you, Brian. Excuse me?
The balance is off, but I'll make it.
Yes. Want to come over in the city, does that help? Boy Scout Troop 336, they want to use our pool for their swim test for summer camp. I don't have a problem with this, this is, you know, the Boy Scouts do anything for that. They have a power, they want to know do they come with their own lifeguards? Did you know that? Antonia, do you want to come up?
Hello everyone. One of the lifeguards from the Limbrook Pool volunteers to help with the Boy Scout event.
Volunteers, okay, so we're going to have somebody there for that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Was it a date or something?
Yes. Oh wait, no, we were looking for the...
They, they didn't pick a date yet, we're in the process of picking it with them.
Date is as needed, okay? All right.
Yeah, I said still moved.
Second?
Aye.
Another one here is for the East Rock, Limbrook East Rock Way Soccer Club, the whole annual soccer tournament in Grace Park on Orbis. That's pretty big day after.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to approve?
Still moved.
Yeah, just, Antonia, can you hold on for a second? So we did this last year?
Yes.
And it seemed to work out pretty nicely. Do you know what kind of expectation you have and are we using, are we using north or are we just doing it only at Grace?
It's just on, it's just at Grace, on the turf and on the grass.
Okay, all right.
On turf and the grass?
Yes, they have full turf.
And I see, oh, you know, I didn't see this, I'm seeing it now, the next page, they will have food trucks.
Oh, that's what I had there.
For their tournament?
No, it said food will be served, possible food truck, it says, on the second page.
Oh yeah, they hadn't, I haven't heard anything back from them yet about if they had a food truck coming or not. I believe last year they did more of, they just brought some little things to give out, but I'm not sure about this here yet, what they, what they were planning. Okay.
Jennifer Rezikov is in charge, so we'll call her and I'll have all the insurances for all these vehicles, ladder, food trucks, and actually, they're going to have insurance for us too.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
You take care of that?
Yeah.
It's pretty quiet here. Stan and Seddon's pay, payouts are on number six. Which one of you generals to hire a neighborhood aide? Brandon Sierra as a neighborhood aide, starting pay of, I don't know, square.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Next is the pay, payroll for neighborhood aide also, fire time, starting pay is 200. So he goes around? We're good?
Good.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. And this one I really like. This is for Antonia Marches, and this is the request Antonia as recreation supervisor. She's one of the top three candidates and therefore, the Nassau County Civil Service guidelines were able to hire her permanently as recreation supervisor.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Sometimes things work out nicely, right?
Yes. Thank you.
No, thank you for everything you're doing.
Good job.
Did a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Four is new programs and contractors. Stephanie Martinez, theatrical teaching artist, Monica Fernandez, Little Learner's Lab, Little Learner's Lab. I guess, yeah.
Phil's getting his XSR.
Antonia Steiner, Illinois, for visual arts teacher.
Okay, yes, so these are a few new contractors that I've been in contact with. Stephanie Martinez, she does all like art classes that are based around theater programs, which I think is interesting since we're building, you know, more of the theater and acting programs at the Fine Arts Center. So I thought something like that would be nice. She does like costume design or movie makeup classes, things like that, that we can do as workshops that I thought would be, you know, something fun and different if we wanted to try something like that. And then Monica Fernandez founded the Little Learner's Lab, so it's her company that she founded that's, you know, learning a second language, so she's offering to come do the Spanish program for us. She's offering a six to eight week program, she said the classes can run between 45 minutes and an hour, and it's for children ages two to four to learn Spanish. And I believe she said that a caregiver will stay with them. The class size is about 10 students and she has, I have the, her little write-up if you wanted to look at it, but she basically goes through between six to eight weeks, a different topic every week, and she uses songs and games and crafts and things like that, so I think that would be something different and interesting if we wanted to try something like that.
Does she have a business in Malvern?
She does. She's out, yeah.
I work with her sister.
Okay. And then the, the last teacher, I actually know her very well, she's a Limbrook resident, her children come and take all of our dance classes. She's an art teacher, she's been an art teacher for almost 20 years in the city and she was also looking to maybe come do some art classes for us at the rec center for children's programs, which I think would also be nice, because right now we have the adult painting class, which is very popular, but we don't really have anything.
Younger kids?
Yeah, for younger kids besides arts and crafts, which is, you know, we do like plate crafts and things like that, but she would be doing more like, like painting and oil work and you can do some sculpting projects or different things like that for someone who maybe is looking for a little bit more of a advanced art education.
All right, great. So would this, we, if these are approved, would we back into what the fee would be for those that want to participate?
Yes, so for the first two, the ones that are more, a little bit more expensive, we usually, like the, the one day class, the theatrical teaching one, something like that, I would do it similar to how we priced the ceramics class that we had done a few months back, that, say it's like $25 a student and then half of it gets allocated towards the fee for the class materials and whatnot and then half of it, you know, goes to the rental of our space. Same thing then for the Little Learner's Lab classes. For the art classes, I think the, the pricing is a little bit more what we typically do, so it would probably be closer to the regular recreation programming prices.
Okay. Yeah, the first one Stephanie, she's a little pricey, don't you think?
A little bit more expensive.
So that would reflect upon the people in the class if they want to spend that money?
I, I think there's definitely ways to keep it on the cheaper end because if we do, I had spoken to her a little bit about it, if we wanted to do maybe the costume design class, she can either do it that each student maybe gets a $20 costume budget, costume, or a $50 budget, so maybe we would stick to the one that's, you know, the $20 budget. She brings like magazines and different little sequins and cutout things versus bringing like fabric samples.
Interesting, now students have to have the covers set.
Yeah, it would have to be, again, like similar to the ceramics class, we'd have to set a minimum and then if the class doesn't reach the, the minimum, we wouldn't be able to run it, but obviously, we'd have to see if the teacher would do something like that before.
So if that works out, I would agree to do that.
Yeah, great.
So provided we have enough students, I, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on agenda is from Keith and All, the seasonal employees new hires. Make a motion to accept recreation attendance, seasonals and lifeguard, grade one seasonals.
Still moved.
As listed. Second?
Second.
On favor? Next is recreational leader. Was requested to pre-move Lily Betta Mignolia for hire as recreation leader to work 29 and a half hours a week, subject to hub being mutual on the list. Any questions?
Yeah.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Next is Ryan Sandy, come down please, Ryan. This is, uh... Grace Hatton, you're recommending to hire Grace Hatton, we've had someone retire in Brian's office, and you're recommending Grace Hatton to take the position?
Yes, I am, man. We interviewed three candidates and she moved by far as strong as of the three.
Any questions, Mayor?
Yes, you're happy with the interview and elements of the plan?
I am, I believe, her skills, what she's working on, will put in with the ability to pull in clerical skills, computer skills, deal with the public. So I think she with some training she could.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to accept Grace Hatton as, and she just had a clerk job?
Okay.
Turb clerk, yes. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. This is from Valerie, summer seasonal help again from Michael DeJoseph, to work in the clerk's office at $16 per hour from 12:45 to 1:00 P.M. Seasonal help, motion? Second?
Still moved.
Second? On favor? Next is, a lot of things going on here this side of the state, right? This is a seasonal hire from Mr. Healy, William Donovan. He's a retired?
Correct.
Okay, retired.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? And then is Ellen Donovan who just retired. Her leave in time and accrued add up to $13,105.37. She also opts to apply her payout to future medical costs. Don't have an issue with that?
Nope.
So, I'll just, motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And this is from Crystal Monowitz, this is Mateo Santos, resigned, effective 5/9/24, and his payout is $247.52. Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And Alice Hogan, Hogan, this is a neighborhood aide, and he resigned also. His payout total, damn it, was $210. Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Aye.
And Mr. Healy again, this is, he'd like to go to a conference. And he's requesting permission, isn't that nice? New York State Urban Forestry Conference in Albany on July 23rd through the 26th. Total cost from staying all night is $857, $857. Room, travel total.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? And then this is from the chief. Permission to attend New York State Association Chiefs of Police Conference, held in Buffalo. This is everything's in Buffalo. Think Buffalo has something to do with that? Should say Governor, okay? From Sunday, July 14th to Thursday, 17th. Conference is three and a quarter and the hotel cost is $507. Motion?
Still moved.
Will you be using your car?
Yes.
Buffalo, huh?
Fun.
Everyone's in favor?
Aye.
This is from the Fire Department, Chief Bean, they're replacing the old personal escape system and they're phasing it out and they have to replace with a new Sterling escape system. These are all the reported, not ceiling numbers on the Orbis side.
I'm going to go from the ceiling gates to the first room.
Anybody have issue?
No.
Motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? And then Library has a Dell 19 inch, I guess they're declared surplus. I guess they're declared surplus. Motion?
Similar.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Down to number nine, Ellis Street paving. This was, uh, did we get a post to this for Ellis Street?
Senator Johnson, yes.
Is this something we should talk here or does we need to be in work session?
Uh, Mr. Johnson, please tell, um, we'd like to hear more details, maybe work session.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, put this on work session and discuss it.
Similar.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
But, uh... Mr. Greenfield, would you like to talk to us?
Sure.
Before I go to the next, uh, agenda, right?
Always happy to talk.
No. Paulie was looking for you.
I gotta shut my door when I have to, I don't need it. I talked to Paulie a little late tonight. Good night. Good evening, Mayor. Ladies of the village board and the public out there. I'm here to talk about the mayor's annual golf outing. And the date is August twelfth, Inward Country Club. And we have had a good response to date. And are very appreciative of those individuals and businesses that have come forward as we salute two outstanding, uh, members of the community. Our own favorite son, the police chief himself. And who's here tonight, Brian Palladino. Thank you for being one of the two, uh, and for the Libra Business Community. We have First Central Savings Bank and Michael Caldwell, the resident vice president.
Very nice, very nice. Nice to have you back in the building.
So we are moving along very nicely as committee. We have another meeting next week. And, uh, the spots are filling up. So I want people to be aware of that. There's a, John put a link from the village, uh, the, uh, website. Do we have a golf website where you can pay for it? For those people that are not technologically engaged, we have old-fashioned brochures here at the village hall and at the laboratory, Marbury. And you can pick it up, fill it out, mail a check, send the check, drop a check off at, uh, one-twelve Merrick Road and my office, NGL Insurance Group. And we have a mail slot that takes money and envelopes twenty-four-seven. The, uh, community chest is the beneficiary, principal beneficiary of the funds of the outing. And we look forward to another big success so that we can stand up here next fall, late fall, when we finish the accounting and make a very nice presentation so that the leaders of the community chest can go forward with their mission to serve those that need help in the Limbrook community. And we had a great time and a great day on the golf course. We're gonna discuss a few new exciting events that may take place on the golf course if the committee blesses them. And, uh, we are, uh, also, uh, because we, uh, appreciate the enthusiasm, the demand because of our outstanding honorees, that, uh, we were convinced the Inward Country Club to open up, uh, and it's online, twenty-four slots, uh, for eight a.m. Uh, tee-off, seven-thirty continental breakfast, eight a.m. I know our own village attorney took advantage of that last year. So it could get back to work and then come back for dinner.
Or just stay there.
I, I, I don't know what his timesheets show, but, uh, uh, he, uh, he, he, he was there bright and early to, uh, and if he wants to do it again, he can go online and sign up before that gets sold out. Uh, we, uh, it worked out that those that want to do the eight a.m. tee-time then can stay and have lunch. Uh, so they, in essence, grab an extra meal. It's good value. They got a continental breakfast.
What about the value?
A quick, a quick round of golf because the course isn't crowded with limited slots available. And then, uh, come back for a cocktails dinner. There are tickets for dinner only available for those in the community that aren't golfers but want to support the cause and especially support and salute the honorees. And we have that availability also. So we look forward to a sell-out crowd and a, uh, another rousing, successful event. And I look forward to reporting that at a future date. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your help all the time. Next on the agenda is item ten A. FD air tank maintenance agreement. What happened, uh, to the fourth stage, John? We used to have some wheels in the past, didn't we?
I guess, uh, there was another contractor, Coastal, that took care of the maintenance. And the fire department found a better deal with, uh, the fourth stage.
Okay. I guess, uh, was this the only other quote we had?
Uh, I'm not sure if there's another company out there. The recommendation comes from Richie. He's, uh, in charge of the, uh, bottom committee, which is void comments.
He's pretty thorough, so. Alright, then I'll make a motion to accept.
Similar.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess it's second, then all.
Yeah.
Next, ten B. Grant amendment installation of soccer field, uh, for the lights at, um, Ocean and Lakeview Avenue. We were able to have some money transferred to the soccer field that's, and, uh, because we had to get some money, that was originally a hundred thousand dollars for cameras. But Congressman Diaz Pizito gave us enough money that we can use that hundred thousand dollars for another location. We were able to have it switched over to having the lights. And then we got, John got another grant from the county to, uh, give us a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in addition. So these will be, lights will be put at that field all by grant money, which is very good. Thanks, John, for your hard work, for reaching out. That's very nice. So I'll make a motion to accept John's hard work and, uh, have two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand be utilized to put lights on the soccer field with grant money, uh, in Nassau County.
John, have, have you spoken to Carlos about this?
No.
Okay. Do you know if he's aware?
Uh, I don't believe he's aware of it.
I think it's a nice surprise.
Yeah?
Because this will lighten up the, uh, playing time for Grace Park. And they'll be able to use that at nighttime, which makes it very nice.
Yeah, that, I, this is a, a big deal for them.
For the kids.
For many years, for many years, they've been looking for something like this. And, uh, I think they'll be very happy. So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's, that's good news for us. Uh, next on the list is PERMA. Uh, it's ten C. This is agreement between the Public Employee Risk Management Association and the Village of Limbrook for administrative services to provide, provided by PERMA in connection with members' obligation to provide workers' compensation benefits and to its employees. I'll make a motion to accept. Any issues?
Similar.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At eleven. This is, uh, the kids from Davidson Avenue School. Davidson Ambassadors, a group of students based in Davidson Avenue School whose goal is to grow civic-minded students, request stop signs to be erected in both eastbound and westbound on Lakeview Avenue at Vincent. Chief, can we talk about this a little bit? The chief and I went over there at this school and met with the young students. They were very well-prepared, they did a lot of homework. And what they want to do is, uh...
Best petition I've seen. It is the best.
Yeah, they reached out to a lot of people. And there's also, uh, there is a blinking light at the intersection they're talking about. My question is, do we need to put stop signs if we put a, make that blinking light red? Do you still want to put stop signs?
I would put stop signs, yeah, because we've had places, they're, sorry to say, most people don't know what a blinking light red is. So, uh, I would enhance the intersection a little bit better with the stop signs. I think it would be better. Originally, their proposal said, it was really nice. They're a group of third, fourth, fifth graders, that's the, uh, the age group at that school. So they were throughout the, the school population. And, uh, this group works on community concerns. So, um, the teacher was excellent. She, uh, she put them, they put together beautiful booklet with all types of, uh...
What was the teacher's name?
Uh, it was Dr....
Very nice lady.
Yeah, she was really nice.
Wish I could get her name because I was late to the meeting. She was, when we got there, she was very attentive to us. Excuse me?
Was it a cross?
No, it was not. It wa... I'll find that in a moment, more, we'll go to you. But what ended up happening was they were actually hoping to get another crossing also at, uh, at Grace and Lakeview. And it was nice, it was actually a good back and forth because, yeah, I told them what my concerns were. I, I don't want people crossing at Grace and Lakeview because Grace is very close to, um, the curve on Lakeview. And, um, I, you know, you have to deal with reality. And, uh, a lot of people are speeding to work and, you know, moving along really quick in the morning. Maybe they're late and, you know, it's, it's not correct, but, and we're out there to correct these behaviors. However, reality is that, you know, people come around that corner pretty fast sometimes. And even if it's thirty miles per hour, it's, it's within the legal limit, but it's...
Not there.
Well, they're, it's not in the twenty mile an hour zone yet, so they're approaching it. But a car can be thirty miles an hour around and it's not fast enough to stop. So I don't want to promote people to be crossing over there. I want where the crossing guard is already, which is at Vincent and Lakeview. So, um, when we enact this and we put the stop sign, it should be, you know, even it's more safe, it should be safer than it is already right now. Uh, the first concern I had personally, we reached out to Nassau County, just made sure they didn't have, because technically it's, it's actually a county roadway. So they have, um, there's certain things that they don't want, you know, they might not want in certain requests. So we reached out to them, but they were totally fine with the requests that we had. And, uh, from there, it, um, it went well. It was, it was really, really nice interaction, you know, with the, the class, they were great. And, uh, I, I would, I would move that we, uh, we go ahead with this project, put up two stop signs. And the light is there, you know, infrastructure's there, we change it to a red blinking light. And, uh, that should be great.
Okay, so we would have to have an electrical company check the light out to make sure it can be, that blinking red light?
No, I have a key box. You can do it right from the box there. It's been done before.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it should work. I mean, I don't think it's not working.
But, yeah, we'll, yeah, that, that should be fine.
And then just the, uh, the installation of the stop sign.
So that's why I was, uh, we can, hold, were you gonna check out the electrical system so make sure it goes into working water? And then would you have two stop signs, Mr. Healy, for that area?
Would you have the stop signs, the county's board, the stripe at the first order?
Um, I haven't gotten approval for that yet.
We can ask.
Day of painting, maybe they will. They run out of paint from time to time.
So you want the county to do crosswalks?
Crosswalk would be excellent. Uh, I believe there's one crosswalk there already.
So we'd want it on both sides of the street, then?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Actually, four corners we walk.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be excellent, so. Okay, we'll follow up with our engineer contacts for that.
Okay, with the lighting and the stop sign. You work with Phil?
Sure.
Alright, and we'll count, contact the county?
Yep.
Well, Phil, you'll contact the county to get them to do the sign, the lines?
Signs, you can insult.
No, the lines.
The lines, we can, can't reach out, I'm sure.
Okay.
They can get on the list, yeah.
You'll take care of that?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you very much.
So you would take that in a month?
What's that?
A month? We should have that set up?
Uh, we'll, we'll try to press it so it's done before school.
Okay.
Start, um, I'm not sure that time is...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we do the, the...
No.
Okay, so I'll make a, uh, motion?
So, John, that's...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They did a great job.
Sure did. And last on the agenda is the bills.
I moved that the bills listed on the abstract that ordered vouchers be paid as soon as they have been duly ordered by the majority.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, it's good, well, Phil.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, first I want to say Happy Father's Day to all the fathers here in the village. Um, I hope you had a great day yesterday and enjoy your, hopefully, peace and quiet and spending time with your families.
You get the key club?
Yes, I have the key club. Alright, um, I think it's, oh, uh, I'm just organizing.
That was very thoughtful.
Yes, I, you know, gotta remember our dads, right? Um, a few great announcements. Uh, two key clubbers from Limbrook High School has made history, which, you know, is great to see an accomplishment, um, of these students. So Limbrook High School Key Club junior members Erica Stroh... Strohoffer? Thank you, chief. And Katie Gottlieb, um, began the process of running for division and district office. In January, Strohoffer found out she won the Division Seven Lieutenant Governor position. And in late March, Gottlieb won the District Executive Assistant Position for New York State District Key Club. This would be a first time in Limbrook's history that students are elected, uh, both have been elected to these positions. You know, it's great to see that students are getting really involved, um, in just more than local than their own town in Limbrook. They're looking to the whole state. Uh, you know, the Key Club adds a lot of value. They do a lot of great things here in the community. And it's nice to have Limbrook on the map and know that, you know, we've got a great group of students who are willing to work hard and give back to their community.
Great accomplishment.
It is a great accomplishment. And you know what? It's the beginning of bigger and better things, you know? They, the Key Club has really made their mark here in the village and been very involved with a lot of different activities and, um, programs. So it's great. And I think it teaches these kids to be, um, care about their neighbors and care about their communities and work hard. Um, and they see end results. Um, since Michael, the deputy mayor, is not here today, he asked me to read, um, his announcements from the library. Uh, the library has formed a partnership with Adventureland, Adventure Park, and Spish Flash for discounted tickets for your family. To purchase Adventureland and/or Adventure Park tickets or to receive the discount code for Spish Flash, please visit the library. Tickets are available on a first-come, first-served basis. You must present your library card at time of purchasing, and it's cash only, no refunds. Cost for Adventureland is twenty-seven fifty, ages two and up. Adventure Park is thirty-nine dollars, ages seven up. Spish Flash is forty-four ninety-nine for children, and children under two are free. Uh, the summer reading club registration began today, or is beginning. Um, there is a club for everyone from birth up. Come join and let the adventures begin at the library. And then on Wednesday, July third, from one to seven, the library is holding a blood drive for the New York Blood Center. All donors will receive two free Met tickets via email and a free T-shirt while supplies lasts. You can schedule ahead of time by visiting the library website and clicking, um, on the link. Walk-ins are welcome. You know, so great things going on at the library, um, this summer. And, you know, I do want to, uh, give a congratulations to Mike. He's missing tonight, Mike's daughter, because she is being honored by Assembly, uh, Assemblymen? I, I'm all wrong here. Congressman Diaz Pizito, um, for her, along with other nurses from South Nassau, for their great accomplishment. So it's a wonderful reason for him to be missing, um, this meeting, uh, this evening, um, in support of his daughter. Um, I also do want to congratulate all the kids from Limbrook and the other towns that participated in the Assemblymen's Flag Day ceremony that was Saturday. It was great to see such a large turnout from Limbrook. These kids have wrote or drew, um, wonderful things about what the flag means to them. Um, and it's nice to see, um, kids, you know, participating in, you know, understanding what Flag Day is all about. Um, sometimes, I think that sometimes gets lost in the younger, um, generations, but you know what? It was a great turnout. It was great to see. Limbrook had the best showing, um, and with many winners and many students participated. And a shout out to OLP. They did an amazing, they made it a social studies project, kindergarten through sixth grade. Um, so they had participants in every grade and it was great to see, uh, what kids really, how kids view the flag and how kids, um, respect the flag and what they believe Flag Day is all about. Um, and lastly, I just want to congratulate all of our kids that are graduating. It is graduation time once again. You know, the high schools are graduating if they've, you know, next week, the middle schools, elementary schools, kindergarten graduations, eighth grade graduations, you know, great things are ahead and I wish them all the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, um, just, uh, as Emery said, the Flag Day interview was, uh, was a nice time. A little windy?
A little windy. Few things blew away.
Few things blew away, but...
A flag might have hit, might have almost hit the mayor, but...
Yeah, he almost was appaled by the flag.
Yeah, well, he wasn't. He caught it.
Um, congratulations to everybody. We had a huge contingent from Limbrook, Limbrook kids and congratulations to everybody. They put a lot of time into it and, uh, it was a nice event, especially for the parents to, to watch their kids go up there. And, uh, a lot of the poems that we put, the, uh, the stories are good and the drawings are, really appreciate everyone's participation. The pool is opening, um, so those of you, I know the sign-ups have been, uh, pretty, pretty robust, so, um, we look forward to seeing everybody at the pool this year. Um, also congratulations to the Limbrook Little League Champions, those that won their, um, each division, so congratulations on, on the successful season. Um, Tony, I think we have, you doing the line dances?
I was gonna, I was gonna come back.
Yeah, you wanna come up and, uh...
That's in two weeks.
Give us a little bit of ideas. It's something new and, uh, it's a little bit of buzz.
Rob's gonna be leading the line dancers.
Yeah.
He has been. He's got his boots ready. Cowboy boots.
My daughter.
I know.
That's right, I'm sure.
I brought my, I brought my flyer with me. Do you want to keep this here?
Hold it up so they can zoom in on it. Can you zoom in on that?
Can you see it?
Can they, uh, turn around the other way? Turn around the other way. They'll take this camera over here.
Oh, duh.
Sorry.
Here it is. Um, yeah, I'm very excited about this, to bring, uh, the concerts back to the park, starting with our country night. I think it's gonna be so fun. I think it's gonna be a really great turnout. We have, um, the filthy...
The enthusiasm.
I'm so excited. I'm so excited. We have the filthy pig barbecue truck coming as well now, so I think it'll be great. It's from 6:00 to 9:00. I love line dancing, so this is... Mayor, are you practicing?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah. Had to practice. Um, it's Sunday, June 30th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It'll be, it'll be a great event. I hope everyone comes with their families and it'll be awesome.
That enthusiasm, how can they not?
That's what I'm saying.
What, are we having like a contingency and hopefully it doesn't rain or anything like that?
Fingers crossed it doesn't rain, but if not, if it does rain, we'll just go inside.
Okay.
The rec is open for the night, just in case. But it won't rain.
I have had a number of people, my whole family excluded, you know, who are really interested in this.
Good, yeah, I hope so. I think it'll be, I think it'll be very exciting.
Right.
And then we'll have another, another concert later in the summer. And while I'm up here, we have a ton of, um, pop-up classes happening in June for, um, down at the rec center, we have some arts and crafts and baking and dance classes. So if you haven't signed up for those yet, make sure you sign up and then all of our summer programming, um, registration opens July 1st. So hopeful to see everybody down there this summer.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Golly.
Uh, I just wanted to, as Emery said, too, want to congratulate all the graduates, um, for this year and good luck in the summer and those that, that are some going on to high school, some are going on to college, graduate, student, everyone. Mike, your turn.
Uh, one of our, um, police officers, uh, on neighboring Rock Hill Center, uh, lost his life in an automobile accident. Um, so I just want everybody to keep Mike, uh, police officer Michael Garner and his family and their prayers they share forward with us. And I know there's a lot of mutual that goes back and forth on, on certain jobs. Um, just, um, you know, pay my respects to him. Um, Elijah, no, can you tell us today, find the owner of the husky?
No.
Yes, yes. They did.
They did find it, yeah.
I did find it. I don't know.
Yes, yes, they did. We followed that the whole day. I might have gotten a phone call from people there asking if the husky can come home.
Yeah. I was gonna volunteer to pay. Also thanks to Limbrook Fire Department, ambulance and police. They have a car flyer, Phillips Plaza, responding to and handled, we had a child struck in one of the, uh, local parking lots on Limbrook, and they did a good job on all those things. Also the Limbrook JP and Ross team, they've run the, the benefit game earlier this year, the baseball teams. Um, they raised $2,300 for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital and for the Buxton family, Jeff Buxton, um, and his kids in, like, they're, they're a local family. This is his, his third ballot candidate at his ballot, so that was really nice and a good job by, uh, by, uh, by the teams at the high school. And I want to congratulate, you know, like everybody else, the graduating seniors in middle school and everybody who's moving up and going up to college, have a safe summer, um, have a safe time and fun at prom. And congrats to Mike's, uh, Mike's daughter Sarah, again, that's a great honor for the nurses and a great position.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention that we christened the new ambulance, this, uh, two weeks ago, I believe it was. And I want to thank the residents and of course this board for being able to pay for a new ambulance for the, for the, uh, medical unit, which do, they do a tremendous job and they're always very, very good to people in the village. Thank you for everyone that participates. With that, I'll, uh, open it up to the floor. And one more other thing, the walkthrough will be getting cleaned up a little bit, so do you have an idea, Mr. Healy, when that will start? So we can ask the residents maybe to avoid it for a little bit?
Yes, we're gonna give it a fresh, a fresh look there. We started it today. The walkthrough during the business hours will be closed probably all week. And, uh, early part of next week, we want to have it ready for Thursday the 26th...
Okay.
...to, uh, open it up. We're losing the 1998 color of the day, uh, that magenta color or something else, uh, more appropriate for the, uh, the next decade.
More neutral color?
More neutral color for the next decade. A little more art tone, uh, painting priming, sealing the concrete, the bricks, uh, power washing the whole place, try to get it all done.
Thank you for doing that right away.
Yeah, yeah.
Making a nice for the kids.
Thank you.
And I'll, any other comments on the floor? And I'll make a motion to adjoint to work session.
Similar.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. Thank you.